Oh, okay. Remember who was and who wasn't?
Not here.
I need to go get my... I don't think we have many hands.
I need to be able to...
How we gonna get paid for the rubber room?
Did you see that?
You gotta have a rubber room?
That's incredible what he did.
It got mounted.
No, it was a seg room that got set fire.
Oh, the seg room, yes.
Now, he peeled off with his fingernails, he peeled off the covering all the way down to the cinder block walls when that...
Was Arminder's in there?
I thought it happened before.
No, it happened over the weekend.
Didn't Arminder tear up the rubber room?
Yeah, he did. About five thousand dollars worth of damage.
Hello, Chris. Senator?
How much was it?
I tried to keep it at five thousand.
Well, let's... I've got photos of the same, probably the same amount of damage now.
I bet it's more than that five thousand.
Have you seen, have you seen that?
That one was commercial.
How long did it take him to do that?
He, I don't think for like seven hours.
No, I'm coming out of the rubber room.
Uh, probably two, three hours.
A pocket screen. Harry, you said.
Looks like you had a white beard, Jay.
It looks like one star. Like Walker, how is this?
Oh, this.
We're in a public forum, I gotta be honest with you.
Timmy.
I heard you heard you went to go.
How's it going?
Haven't been.
Oh, I've been hiding under a rock. Everything going well?
Been busy. Read the state districts, know everyone in sports.
Well, they cut out tournaments for volleyball.
They, I told you they were going to.
Disappointing, but they just...
Tournaments are cut out? Only volleyball.
So, but they're adding teams in, so we gotta play with this guy back in the back room.
Nice ball, none?
They don't.
Yeah. Yeah, Rangers did mean...
They're already in midseason form, so it's good.
That's true, they are. I know what's going on there. They can lead, they beat the...
Hey, they were talking about every game you play is worth 2.7 games because of the way it's, you know, the way they've eliminated so many deals.
I don't even know that they're playing.
So, if you multiply 2.7 times your record, they're really bad off right now.
That multiplier, that damn thing. I think the team has still advertising that the Cowboys and the Rangers.
Yeah, the Cowboys, I think have some better... You know, we actually sold out the Rangers.
Really?
Thursday afternoon.
I see where Cowboys are still the most valuable sports franchise in the world. At $5 billion.
But think about it. Ninety-six was the last.
By this day and here.
I promise not to kiss you.
Is that about Mr. Walker?
So, the little bite? Yeah, the little bite. This is out there just for self to...
No, will you check your messages?
They track. I keep positive records. I need to ask you, addresses in there too. I don't know what they call it, Tim Walker, Positive Radio Network, KBLI.
Positive Radio.
One hundred point five. They hear this is about this one. Tim Walker, CBS, Positive Radio Network, LLC, one hundred point five FM, KBLI.
Positive Radio.
Okay.
No else, or may they say?
We got you, you also.
I just want to get a little...
No, it's on in here, it's even... It does. That hello? They look red in the fall. But they're pretty good.
Young County Commissioner, George Young, sitting in a regular meeting Monday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, it is nine thirty-three AM. I might note that this meeting was posted in minor part of time prior, that all members were all present, and it gets convenience to the fans for every case. Father and mother, thank you for this day, for the many blessings that you bring to us each and every day. But we're grateful for this nation, grateful for this state, grateful for this county. We're awarded that privilege to serve those by whom we're elected and to work in their best interest, as long as it follows your direction. We ask your blessings upon the servants of the public, whether they be military or civilian. Ask your blessings upon them. Ask your blessings upon those who have lost loved ones and who are ill health and need your comforting arm. We ask that if you feel your will bring to them this COVID-19 thing thing, and let's get back to a normal, we pray that we get back to a normal way of living. We ask for your blessings upon this meeting, upon decisions that we have made, as that we seek your counsel in those decisions we know we have. We ask that you give any forthcoming just how we will, across our Friday event. Let America fly.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and universal.
Thank you, please proceed. Okay, number three, comments now, Mr. President. The only thing I have on this right now, although there's gonna be one other thing I could say, presence there, but we'll, I'll give a little update on our COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. And this is gonna be as of late yesterday afternoon. Total test in Young County have an outcome of two thousand five hundred and eight. Two thousand three hundred and four of them have been negative. Two hundred and fifty of those have been positive, and there are twenty-six ten included, been those total positive have been residents of Young County, Palatina County, Jackson County, Stevens, Perrin, Wise, Benton, Hood, Parker, Ballis, Haskell, Teal, Love, Chapelford, Walker, and Archer. The total active cases that we're reporting as of yesterday, like yesterday afternoon, is sixty active positive cases of residents in Young County. That's my report on COVID. I say our district attorney and our assistant district attorney would like to come forward in this session and give us a little more, come on up here, what we call here. I know there's been a little, I guess, a little worry about funding the bond supervision officer, as we have today. The bond supervision officer is actually an employee of the City of Graham, which directed, I believe, by our adult probation officer, by his family, instrument, right? And that's through our not even district unit, our not even district court. So, there's been some indication that there may be some... They might not be willing to fund that this year, that'd be the City of Graham who hosts that, I guess, would, it's a, it's restricted by five different agencies. There's three cities, two counties. The Young County, Stevens County, City of Graham, City of Almond, and the City of Red. So, I think that's what y'all wanna talk about.
Yes, sir. I appreciate y'all having me here today. Friday afternoon, I spoke with Brandon Anderson regarding this matter. Cliff Black saw you come to my office and advised me that this was happening. I called Brandon and just kind of went over the history. And I don't know if y'all know the history of how we ended up with our bond supervision officer. But several years ago, and you can quite remember, we were having a significant crime wave inasmuch as individuals would bond out of jail and then they would be on a payment plan with their bondsmen. So, then they would go break into the theater and the church and the food pantry. I mean, we were just having a rash of break-ins, and people were sick of it. So, they formed a citizens group called Crime Leaders Against Crime, CLAC. And they had a meeting with the police chief and the sheriff and Judge Bristow and I, and said, "We want something done." Judge Bristow and I and the other leaders decided that perhaps having a bond supervision officer might be able to prevent some of this thing. And we went and visited with the various public cities that you mentioned and the counties and asked if everyone would contribute a little to his, to his salary base. And everyone agreed, and actually, I think it has worked out quite well. We have had so many people that if they, they get drug tested and if they're not, if they get a hot U.A., then we go ahead and have their bond held insufficient with them in jail, which works very well because generally you have people out there using drugs and they're breaking and stealing papers and what have you. And it, Cliff has done an outstanding job. As a matter of fact, we've done these ankle monitors on many of them, which have been able to locate drug houses through these ankle monitors furthermore. We almost had a really bad criminal situation where someone could have gotten hurt in Almy, but Cliff was on top of it, notice that this person that was on bond was violating and had left the premises where he was supposed to be confined, and he had broken into a house that was still in weapons. And there was a young woman there at the time with young children there having a somnolence. So, I mean, it's been very helpful, I believe. I don't think Brandon really understood how this all started. He had since emailed me and said that he'd like to have a meeting with everyone that was involved. He may have gotten that email, so I didn't actually make a copy on it. I think one of his concerns was that we're supposed to meet annually per the local, interlocal agreement. I don't think I'm even a part of that interlocal agreement as far as meeting regularly, but I just told him they'd call me, so I think that's what they're going to do and try to decide what to do. But I think if we're giving a lot of bang for our buck, and I'd be very disappointed if we were to, you know, just quit this program altogether. I spoke with Daryl at probation today, and he said with Austin's permission, he could run it through his office. It's not running through his office right now. This is just Judge Bristow, I guess, kind of is the overseer of this in the court. So, anyway, that's where we are right now.
Originally, that bond supervision, like that, were handled through adult probation department, but some kind of regulation from our state agency forced them out of that.
That is correct.
Or they had to do that.
And there was an attorney general opinion, who said that they couldn't allow them to do that. However, there are other counties that have gotten around that, and they've gotten permission from Austin, or however they're doing it, to see what they're getting.
Briefly, Philip Gregory, I must tell you, no, I am... It's easy to come in here and talk about dire consequences if you do something like cut a bond supervision officer. And it's easy to talk about dooming a little bit. I can assure you that I work closely with Cliff along with Dee, and we monitor these individuals that are either arrested on felonies or they're under indictment for felonies. And almost on a daily basis, we are getting bond supervision violation reports. And we are able to make the determination whether or not we want to hold their bond insufficient by filing a motion to hold their bond insufficient. If you have anything else or you don't do it at all, you're gonna have a catch and release for the perspective that you're gonna have people bonding out, and then they're not gonna be supervised. And you may or may not have them show up to court when you need them to show up. That clogs up your docket with people who are not appearing, and it also allows people to continue running free. One of the things that you can do on bond supervision is if you identify somebody who has a drug or alcohol problem, you can actually force them into drug or alcohol counseling through those conditions of bond, so they could possibly address those issues. You have an opportunity to intercept people who are going off on some kind of mental health issue through Cliff Black saw. And we're able to stay on top of that before that becomes a tragedy in our community. And it's not just the City of Graham's benefiting from it, it's the county that's benefiting from it. It's Stevens County, it's Almond, it's Newcastle, it's all the counties and the municipalities that we, that y'all represent, we represent. And so, I would, I would hope this is, we would thank you for allowing us to talk about something that's a non-agenda item. But when it becomes an agenda item, I think that you'll have good input as to, you know, what decision y'all need to, y'all need to look at. And so, we're in wholehearted, you know, support of that office staying open and it being used, and it's being used, it's not being abused. And so, it's, it's an avenue so we can monitor some people.
In the intero, in the intero with three acts of meetings of the district judge, county judge, and the managers of the precincts. And that's the meeting that's close to late. Obviously, we have met before, probably the year following its setup. But when you're not having any problems, that's hard to remember. Not having meetings on that, so there hasn't been any meetings or any problems with that setup until the possibility of the city not appointing the host.
Exactly.
And I understand that we've got problems just like we do with the way they found their blessing.
As I explained to Brandon Anderson, you know, people are entitled to reasonable bail, even people that are dangerous. And so, this is why it's so important to be able to monitor these people, to catch it before they go off the rails and hurt somebody and avoid a tragic situation.
I know it worked very well, even through the county court, the bond supervision officer, to make this court aware of several times when someone was following their bond supervision schedule, they were ignoring those circumstances. This worked very well, we applied pressure, proper pressure, they began, they began to pull federal charges, one way or the other. Yeah, you know, it got surprisingly, came apart, but I do have a Twitter and an email on that, right, like Friday.
Once it's a checks and balances with a bell on the use of these, on Peter Gipman and outlets, which is good. And so, what you're basically saying is, Brandon, this is really just not interesting.
For $21,000, and I think that's, you're getting a lot of bang for your buck.
You really are. Is there any statistics you can show, you don't have any, that they're dealing with?
We have Cliff here now, and Cliff has also mentioned that with the bond supervision fees, he's been able to, don't you pay some of the, don't you pay them back some of these fines?
Well, all the things that are collected go into the city agreement. And since it started, the first year, I collected $32,230. The second year is $38,246. It was $37,190, $31,071. Last year, we failed $24,497. This year, I can't remember the track, as of today, $18,002. As you keep getting the same repeat equal three there, and you're realizing we're not going to jail for not paying the fees, they're getting harder and harder to get out, they're getting harder. And then with what all is going on right now, it's getting harder.
So, they're getting their money. What's the total cost of the decision? What's the total cost of what it costs to do that?
Well, the city budget this year was $65,249, is what they budget.
I'm the original budget, I looked, then I saw that, I think it was $56,000 or something, and $24,000.
And, you know, right now, I'm at 72% of the budget, so I'm under budget right now.
So, between that $65,000, or, or, I know what we give, Brick Ridge makes up percentage, and Graham makes up the percentage, do they figure that in my calculation, or how's they figure?
That I don't know, I wasn't there for that part of the meeting. What I do know...
There's an equation calculated, and I think, I think it's sixteen...
He said sixteen point eight?
Sixteen point eight percent, or, I think Stevens County and Young County, yeah, they, Brick Ridge, I think it's a little taller than that for Almond.
I don't know what the City of Brick Ridge is putting in, I've heard five and I've heard 10. Almond is putting in five.
We originally put $10,000, in fact, we did for a year or two or three. The city started invoicings for less than that, so we paid the invoices and every time did $10,000. And I think we got a lot of reimbursement, because we did, like $10,000.
I think that first year, we were, I assumed that we'd just paid the $10,000 and I said, "Well, they sent money back." But after that, I waited until I get the invoice, and they take off my fees.
So, the city paid, so everybody else blew in $10,000. We have transportation, transportation.
Yeah, we have vehicles out there. Would you say Cliff, the City of Graham has more, he bargained?
Oh, yes, they have.
You know, I knew that, I was wanting that out. Well, I'd like to add something I fell to mention. Cliff is a true, from a perspective of what he does, he gives us a true view into what that defendant is actually doing and what their attitudes are. When we go to trial, we're forced to trial by a particular defendant, he's one of our, one of our, what we call 404B or our punishment witnesses, because if they have not been doing what they're supposed to be doing, and he's been able to catalog it, he's been able to identify the days and days of what this person's done, we present that to the jury, and it gives a truer picture of what that person is actually doing while on bond. And every one of us in here can say, "If you're on bond for a felony, you're probably trying to behave." Most normal people will. There's a lot of people that don't care. And a jury can hear that, and he is, he is a conduit for that. You have police reports, you have prior criminal acts, all that stuff goes into it. But he is a valuable, up-to-date source of information for our office to present to juries and the court as to the behavior of people who are on bond. But frankly, if a person is unbonded or violating bond conditions, they probably can't be trusted to be on probation. And so, he's a valuable source of doing that, and that's, there's so many benefits if we get out of that program. It would be a travesty to walk away from.
We're working on it, but it's what happens, so we'll fight the, the lawsuit for you.
We appreciate y'all hearing us. We could organize a meeting.
I'm sure that we'll have a meeting now in the next few days. Can we meet soon?
Yeah. Y'all take care, y'all.
All right. One other little thing, I guess, everybody's work, little thing that we have in our petition center.
I didn't really hear anything you were saying, but I was assuming you want me to kind of bring you on with what happened Saturday? Uh, one of our inmates, our seg cell, set fire to his manager's and caused an incident that we had to take care of. You know, and this is one of our inmates that we did, for a while, some mental issues that we've been trying to rehouse somewhere else. Finally, I moved Saturday night, so hopefully that'll take care of that for a while. We did have to temporarily evacuate everybody out of the jail till we can get everything, everything situated, cleared up. Other than that, they look pretty good. James did a good job. The support we had out in the community was really, you know, as far as bond enforcement, was great, he could have showed up, Grand PD, my guys, so it was, was very smooth with the situation we had. And it makes pretty good, right now, we're just still investigating it. We have investigators in there right now, working in the seg cell to, we're gonna treat it like a crime scene.
He brings some investigators in?
No, we're investigating ourselves, I know we're not, I already know how it started. I mean, it's not gonna be that hard to... And he is, where now? He's, he's in another facility, yes. Did you say that you tried to get in another facility? Yes. We've been working, we're trying to get this to happen. Yes. But that was... Phil really helped out a lot, didn't he? I'm gonna tell you, the Saturday, from the time this thing was cleared up, him and I, Paul's been long before a half hours, till about 10:30, Saturday night, getting him placed in a mental facility. Let me reemphasize what all this means. It means that the state of Texas, largest mental health facility, is still our county due. Absolutely, you don't get any right out of it. And then we're, we're paying for it on county level, it's being added into your tax rate. This incident would not have occurred if that person had been moved when the sheriff asked him to be moved. And while I have more and more of these kind of instances, as long as the state of Texas does not step up and take care of it, you're fine with it. You are absolutely right. Does, uh, can we ask some other individuals there? That are almost, you know, like this guy, because it was, you know, played, you know, it's 14 months, 14 months for a state hospital bed. More than six, more months to any facility which fell apart. Your facility is not designed for that. And 120 something beds empty in Big Springs at the state hospital, because the state won't fund. Other than that, it was a great weekend.
Well, it wasn't a weekend otherwise.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else that you'd like, I think, bring up, I'll bring up. Public plan.
I've got deeper eyes in here, don't get flustered.
Get too flustered.
Yeah.
Okay. Number four, consider county clerk management for your name, July twentieth, two thousand twenty, or any additional violation or directions. So, uh, stay. Motion for permission, five seconds with Mr. Rogers to approve this, uh, county clerk for July twentieth, Dean Hall, it's based, uh, on. Number five, consider pressure financial court application, please. We have a resolution this year regarding to that, obviously, a resolution to withdraw and substitute, we've done this a number of times before. There only two. Withdraw amount obligations there, and substitute other four. Sheriff Mike Brant, designated as qualified responsible depository, Young County Department of Court, pledge securities, protects the sense of bank. Asking for authorization to place following securities, amount of five hundred six thousand seven hundred and one dollars, and to place those with other securities of the large value, five hundred, uh, yeah, thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars, eighty-five dollars. I know it will be about the resolution.
One second.
On paper, I have the resolution, said resolution, five. I have a June three ports in front of you. Everything balanced, we're still looking fairly well for the end of the year. Six million four fifty-eight, nine twenty-nine, and fifty-nine cents in our operating account.
What's your yield?
What?
Texas.
We have a hundred. But they're still up. Oh, you mean the top?
She reminds us of the call down.
I think it's, I can hear. I, I didn't bring it. But we're over the-
We're over this?
We're over, a hundred percent. What we've done.
Look, I did turn, you think we got around, we'll get it here.
Yep, we're, we're, but we have one more payment that's due August.
Was it thirty-three?
Yeah, it's just the interest. We have, uh, two or three more accounts to move into the general, the county court records management, county records preservation, and one more, I think, and then we're all in line with what the outside auditor.
I'll second that.
I'm open for Mr. Wiley, second, uh, good, good. I have some more. Of the council, present. Thank you, all. I don't know. Nothing down there a little more. First week. Now, number six, is, uh, considered off the budget minimums, about, like.
I have that just handled. The total today is eighty-one thousand one ninety-four fifty-three. Out of the general is forty-one thousand one twenty-eight ninety-nine, and there is some mutating included in this round.
Forty-one one?
Forty-one one twenty-eight ninety-nine.
So, like, I- I don't know, motion, uh, do it. Second by Mr. Rogers. To approve the example, county, uh, presented by County Elder, all papers.
Aye. Do you know what you want?
Yeah, I also had, uh, something else to talk about. The, uh, the tax assessor office down here, she did get the small screens with the windows, and it covers right there. Well, now we have an issue, the customers are sticking their hand around, and we have, uh, uh, Sherry went down and measured, and to see what we could do to add a few more, to kind of solve that problem, where they can stick their hand around, and it would take three at five hundred dollars to reach, to get it shut up.
You know that's occurring everywhere. You know, the supermarkets, they can't do your chain, you have to wait the screen and the cash register. I mean, we're doing what we can do, and that's-
But man.
But, uh, but in order to cover that totaling, just cook all those down, and just have it where-
We can use a barrier that you can't see through, it's really good. Have to place the left.
Be mine.
Tim Walker's picture in there.
Like, the clerk has to, we can, we can, keep them away from everything that, uh-
Sir.
I, I just, the clerk, or, on the death, these are, that, of course, like, you know, put it, go ahead, put it there, whatever out there.
I agree.
I don't like you. You know, that's been the money, that's the problem. Remember those rights?
Sir.
Sir.
Sir, yes. This is, uh, on the same day, is that our engagement letter?
Disgusting, consider engagement letter from our outside auditor, paid, or, or, continuing to claim. We did this, I think this is half their year. Whatever of the year.
The whole, we know it'll take time for him to start up, the current year is hot, it's been very time. And last year, he did not get to come here, and however, we, we sent him lots of information, so. He's done a good job.
Love to the U.
Good luck.
Second.
Motion, uh, Mr. Wiley, second, uh, Mr. Rogers, approve, uh, approve the engagement letter, engine parts, cleaning plate, for our outside. We go on the line.
Okay.
Which do you think?
We didn't vote, is it live, or?
I'm asking, I vote.
Okay.
I, Wiley, approve, or, second?
We should vote it.
I'll take it, because I didn't have it down there, like that. Number seven, discuss, consider fully bonds of the militia life, for, no kind of community supervision, registered department, and Darrell Gilmore, no kind of supervision, registered department.
I believe we approve these proposed bonds.
That's the next. Motion for Mr. Sykes, second by Mr. Rogers, do, um, approve those bonds as, for any, all papers, I have, uh, dialogue. Now, number eight, discuss, consider, um, putting the radio antenna on the power of the sheriff's department, uh, for urgencies, for one hundred point five KBLY radio stations, presented by Mr. Tim Walker.
Good morning. Judge, I've been working closely with Mike Sykes, and working out an agreement that looks reasonable for this. You raised your question the last time we visited about, uh, you know, would there be an advantage? And this is strictly for emergencies, and a concession that I would do is not run commercials during any time that we would be in the sheriff's department, that it would be strictly for emergency use. Um, the two main examples were the, uh, fact that we lost power at the main tower, which is up on two oh nine. The other is that we lost our building, both of which eventually we'd like to have our own generator system in. But the, uh, problem with the generator in our building, over here on Fourth Street, is that the entire building, that entire fourth, uh, fourth, uh-
The corner.
Corner, yeah, the mall, is, uh, under one, uh, power service. So it would be hard to break everything out, the way that those suites are, are there. Um, but the, uh, the biggest issue that I picked up on is like, there's some kind of an unfair advantage that all are helping a commercial entity, and I feel like, uh, this is strictly for emergencies. And the only time I could ever see an, an exception to this is if we happen to be on the air for a football game, losing something, or any, any reference to anything. Uh, but during that time, it would just be the rebroadcast of, of whatever it is that we're doing, uh, but not the commercial entities, not the commercial spots, and, and basically keep it strictly as an emergency for updates from the sheriff's department, or the city, as, you know, any, any official entity that needs to have that broadcast over the airwaves.
Sheriff Matt Kopp, you have, thank you, like, for taking part in this?
No, I'm good, as, as long as, as long as we don't have, like you were talking about, that he's gonna profit off of this antenna, and it's only for emergencies only, I'm typically, and I think it'll be great, especially in an incident like what we had with the tornado, and it goes down. We'll have that backup, which I think is very important, communicate between the two of us, or anyone.
This will be only pre-used, uh, with KBLY loss.
Yes, sir. If we lost it at our studio, we could go to that back, uh, studio at the sheriff's department. If we lost the tower side, we would stay at our studio, but broadcast from the sheriff's department, until we could rectify whatever the issue was.
And so, uh, at Grand City Football, can you, uh, something called, you've been losing power, and you're powered, and you're wanting to broadcast from there?
Right. We would have somebody turn on the broadcast, um, you know, as I do, how important those sports broadcasts would be, that that was the only, I just wanted to put it out there that that was a possibility, that if, if we did, uh, or really any event, that it would be of a really local, uh, level, that we were able to switch on and make this happen. Um, Commissioner Rogers made a good point about, you know, coverage area, and my goal is to have that generator system on where we cover, including the all-need area, but in real, I mean, realistically, that tower won't cover, but about, you know, a little past the Grand City limits, unless you're in car. I want to have a signal that penetrates the entire county, and I am moving forward on another frequency to do that. Having said that.
You got the escalator, I have the, the antenna, I have the sheriff's department, yeah?
Uh, yes, we were going, now, in between the two antennas, there's a space that's available in between, and I don't know which one of you connected with.
The deck.
Uh, whoever, whoever's, uh, taking care of your frequencies.
Local.
You have to do.
Local.
Yeah, and they, they were good with that, I'm guessing.
That, you're saying that has a variable, uh, return?
No, at a thousand watts, you'd be able to hear it in a car, but, uh, and like I said previously, had the FCC giving us that other frequency, probably would have already been on the air by now from there, so it would be an isolated incident. Uh, the goal would be, let me give you the example, the tornado, when it went through, we lost a string of telephone poles, so we, we were gonna be down a while, but within three hours, we were able to get with our, uh, Mike's Westside rental, get that generator out there. Now, the whole, the ideal situation, we, we would have our own generator, but something to keep into consideration, that tower is probably thirty years old, and if not older, that's the old, uh, variety, or GT variety, whatever it is, that's essentially out there. That's also T-Mobile and Sprint, so you have now three internet, so, exactly. Also.
Set on the dumb.
Yes. Yeah. So I'm, I'm under the impression too, that if that tower ever went down, or we had an issue with that tower, we'd be losing cell service, and I think that would be vital, if the station would be able to go on the air from the sheriff's department, so we could just, maybe.
Okay, so you put a Westside rental rented, uh, generator, go out there, put on tech.
Right. Well, if, yes, but what the, let me tell you what the scenario was. When the tornado went through, at roughly ten o'clock, the power lines were knocked out when the tornado went through at South Bend. So, we had to get a generator, and it was about three or four hours before we could get that configuration set up. A lot of people wondering, is this tornado moving forward? Um, cell services were down, there were a lot of incidents, and, and to be honest with you, the, uh, tornado warnings, I'm surprised with, with the tornado five miles, well, really, at the closest point, I think it was at three and a half miles, if, uh, for those not to go off. People were really wondering what's going on, they were tuning in to Rick and myself, and find out what's up, and we had no power. So, and there's been other instances in other counties where they needed a broadcast in the sheriff's department, or from a central location for emergency broadcast. I'm making reference to the fact that I've got the transmitter, I've got the antenna, I've got the commitment for the cable. Uh, this isn't gonna be an expense, I'm looking at this strictly as an emergency, and not to try and profit off of y'all providing me a backup, so, uh, I'm, uh.
That could be your case, and I'll mention that. How, how governor don't have a, a, why, the, the generator on that?
There is one, but the service was previous to me getting out there. There is one, but the service was previous to me getting out there and it's completely wired with a transfer switch. And it's limited to the power for what was already out there. There is another, the T-Mobile people came after I did and they're in the same boat. They need a generator for their site, but they're on separate services. So it's like we're going to have to get our own generator to do it. There is one generator there for them, but it's for the only the T, um, I'm sorry, not T-Mobile, Verizon customer.
If you were. Your antenna, your antenna stations that affect your power on the grand tail, the other power.
Well, let me put it this way, I'm in five year increments. And what I'm paying right now for rent on that tower, I could pay for a tower in eighteen months. So I would prefer finding another site and I have a few folks looking at possible locations for another tower. And at that time, I would for sure put in a generation system and add for my own. But it's, it's stupid for me to be spending money on something where I'm really not happy with it. And another thing, there's some shadowing on the tower. By adjusting a little bit and putting the tower at the right location, I would cover ALNE much more solid. And the other issue is when I get the other frequency that I've already petitioned the FCC for into the auction. When I get that other one, I mean, the antenna I'm planning on using will be right there at ALNE and going up to Archer. Archer City, where is that?
Yes, sir. Obviously, what this, this court is trying to do is to supply flow of information to our citizens in the event of these kind of emergencies. So that's our sole intention of doing anything here. This is probably not the a hundred percent of the answer, but it's certainly a good part of the answer, being able to do this. And so I think it'd be a very advantageous to the community to add this up there. There's a couple of things we'd like to change. I had some feedback from the court here. Where if you have to move your station down there for a general emergency, one that's called in a localized nature, that we only go through the sheriff, rather than through the Emergency Management Coordinator's unit. Have two people trying to make the decision and have to be in opposition. And since it's out there at the sheriff's plant, he's in charge of that, we'll take the Emergency Management Coordinator off of there. Just wanted to make sure that all of this is done with your overview and your inspection and your, your approval. So everything here is, once we pass an agreement like this, it's kind of up to you. And once again, all the expense of installation, maintenance, upkeep would be concentrated on it.
Yeah, it'll be called thirteen, done by professionals that know what they're doing.
Does anybody else have any questions about this draft agreement?
You're going to have a professional help with that?
Yes, sir. That, I'll either use a company out of Marble Falls or a company out of San Antonio. One of the two, there's not very many tower companies here and I'll tell you, the ones out of Dallas are so expensive that it really wouldn't make it work well.
What do you think about, it's a good probably six years since we checked the type of several votes? Think they can do that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I could have them do an inspection, send anything to us soon enough, yeah.
Do you think that's a six year to build?
Yeah. Well, I will tell you that I'm just going to lay it out here for you that if I get this other frequency, that's going to be focused on, and I think y'all are not focused on right now. Even though when I'm on the two oh nine signal, it's pretty decent up there and it covers, you know, it covers the entire county. But where my antenna is mounted on the tower, it causes some shadow. And I can't get on the best side, which would be the north side of the tower, I'm on the southeast side. So I really do want a penetrating signal up there where you guys, no matter what, if you're either advancing this one or doing a total different frequency.
So what does that have to do with it all?
Uh, they're actually, right now, I'm a six thousand watt FM. If I had, if I went north, there's just no tower out there if I, and the terrain isn't. But whatever that cutoff to Gene, I think it's the Gene cutoff, about five or six miles up there, I could go to twenty-five thousand watts from that site. And cover all across the Pigeon Lake and up to Archer City just from one tower and one frequency. That gets pretty expensive because I'd have to have a taller tower.
You check that tower there, direction one fourteen sixteen?
I'm sorry.
One fourteen sixteen, you check that tower.
One fourteen sixteen.
I saw that judge go where they wouldn't allow anybody to get on there anymore. They've already had. What's that? We tried to get on there with the volunteer, they wouldn't let them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know which tower. There's nobody on it.
Nobody on it?
Yeah, and they're, no, the problem with that, they're reserving it for future cellphone growth. It's, believe it or not, that's what they're trying to do. They put up a bunch of these two hundred foot towers, and I think that might be a little bit taller. They put these towers all over, especially up and down I twenty, and they're using them for cellular expansion because everybody wants wireless internet everywhere. So that's, that's what. But they have no, there's nobody on that tower and it's out of my range where it would be hard to hit Newcastle from that site.
That's the full information that what you had in.
Yeah.
It was for sale one time.
It was for sale.
I could apologize.
Yeah. I'm surprised, you know, I'm really surprised that somebody hasn't used that for something because that's a pretty good way out there.
Well, the thing is, we're excited to get from one of the highest points.
Around that ridge?
Yeah. The, I noticed that they have the cellular service that's in Loving and it's almost on a portable system up there in Loving. And I'm surprised that they didn't use that for the cell site.
Well, we, if we're there for that was there. Cell service. It's over there across from Denny's Carl's down here.
Who owns that?
APD owns that. It was owned by Brad Pitt. Brad Pitt's out. He had that so.
Uh, now that's a loaded question. Now, on the other frequency, yeah, that one will be sports news talk. That'll be a total different format. Not for emergencies and not for, those will all be some of his. But I do plan on doing some of that direction.
You're not going to commercial last, ready to get away, just like, just like that around.
I would think if we're on the tower there, that our advertisers would not be getting.
So it'd be Sam's commercials.
They would.
No commercials. Or you're broadcasting from that?
Yeah, if I had to broadcast from there, I felt, I felt that was fair because you did have a good point two weeks ago when I visited with you that, that, you know, would be an advantage. I'm not looking at it for that. I'm looking at it for the sheriff or whoever else to be able to go on the air when we've got trucks going every different direction, trying to figure out power lines and damage it.
Some, some surface taxes like that. Of course, this course got fined that there's a lot of the, if two citizens from county that interacted that, which we can't do things that. Gives us time. By, uh, by another, if we all have that.
But I like the idea that Fisher Sykes said that the sheriff would run the show on this.
I can deal with coming on the court to, or somebody. If you want to do this, I'm offering a lot of consideration, you can put us in. On Martin City, twice, been, been, been citizens from county. We're not, we're not any other extra in here that I see. Am I missing something? Providing. We're going to have to provide. They said the best interest of the citizens beyond county and certain, and on Martin City, twice, and twenty-three. Do whatever we need to do there. Get that in, they kind of get. Introduction here where it is the welfare of the citizens beyond county. Is a comment on delivery, timing, inflation, at the time of the public market, so it's pressed. We have motion like that with Mr. Sykes?
Uh, yes, for those changes, but leading into the sheriff's striking Young County Emergency Management and also after transmission of the emergency location without commercial advertisements. I move that this agreement be approved.
We have multiple mentions. Sykes. Second by, while he took time, it is in the best interest of the commercial situation that this, this Young County that are entering an agreement with APDL Y, KPL radio. I'll see with the modified changes that have been on that out there. And that probably being in the agreement, it can be. Either party can cancel. Or days notice.
That is, that is written in that last paragraph, sir?
We agree.
Could I add one thing? If we did do a cancellation of an agreement because of scheduling for removing equipment, that I'd prefer ninety days of, of, for removing equipment.
Thank you. Work that out with the sheriff.
Okay, on flavor?
Uh. Upstate.
Upstate. We're going to apply.
Upstate.
And trust me, he doesn't pay much. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
It's real company.
We've entered this agreement. Stand up. We're okay. While he on the second. Called the possibility of some operation. Good, thank deliberation.
And then?
Yeah, so my.
I know, I feel like you'd be in.
He wasn't going private.
Number ten, this, this is a pocket on. I don't. To receive and consider single court chip seal bids for sheriff and county vote, Mr. Stacy Rogers. Sheriff.
You're next.
Sheriff.
Zero. No, sir, we sent a lot to several companies and.
Court over here, find me out, they don't get the rate of nature, so they're stating that we have.
Right now, we're going to. Uh, I talked to Jack Edwards about it. He was very open to it. I discussed paying them for their equipment and for their cruise time. Would provide all the materials necessary to lay down the road and that's got to be cleared now through the city management council. So they're doing it too already, what's the rate of nature?
I don't know.
Yes. Were they able to pay for many trains, like if they need to block malls or whatever? Not for help and do. Not for help to do it. And when, and when they do need that, we simply does support them anyways. Just very little bit. But it's a good protocol thing. They have us a lot too.
They understand that might happen all over the county?
Sure. Yes, sir. They haven't put any kind of restrictions on my request yet.
My job, my yearly thank you program job is to, uh, of. So I still got the question. I was still going to go out and be as, you know, like a transparent, and they, side of the day, and I don't want to say it too far. You want to go review it?
You want to review it individually?
Yeah, here's the county's homework.
I think that with CTEF money, everything we spend on the roads, with a vendor has to be bid, doesn't it? What, that one stipulation?
I'm pretty sure that.
Even if it's under fifty thousand?
Yeah. Level, we get our bid on the rock.
That they covered it?
That covers that. My initial, uh, check that out, three miles.
Two miles?
Is this partnership? So this was just something he was going to do and he.
She spent fifty thousand on two miles of road each year?
Less than fifty.
And we had.
Nobody has.
We have spent none this year to this company that he's looking at. So if he did it, he could do it without bids if he's not the one.
Options here is to extend the bid or to, uh, re-advertise or to. There, there are not any bids.
Just declaring no bids and then let's think about what we want, next step we want to do. Over here from the city and there's other alternatives that I'm exploring for. Do you want to extend your bid today on your roads?
Hundred fifty thousand, but how do you go out with bids for?
Until it becomes a CTEF project.
Be that on CTEF.
This is on the direct basis. Then you don't have to go after it.
Excellent. So your, your, uh, CTEF program, we're going to be after.
We have no idea when the CTEF money is going to be allowed to be spent, so. Where do you go? I'm listing with a baby company for, or if they use an alternative method to the old style chip seal to do that. And so I'm waiting to hear back from that also. I can make it after October. Does it matter when we start spending the CTEF money, if we're approved today, whether to do it in this budget year or the next budget year?
She wants.
Can we add brother?
You want to add up October first? Yes, definitely after October first.
Rest plus on this end, but you're done.
Okay.
Right. And then, and then, you know, I think if that was for me. You know, I think work out. Why you was about to drive up to this, all these stomachs, and this is our budget year.
No, she don't want it. She don't want to spend anything for.
I have it, they know it. I know with CTEFs when y'all did it, it really was.
No one's telling me what it was. They won't pay you before.
I'll take an end date for projects that are on that, that within this budget year. This is our budget year. I don't know that, though, if they get completed, if those funds are covered in this budget year, I may all. I'm going to say, I guess we get all the funds that we receive and then something here.
Matter of fact, we'll have to operate another ensuing year.
Yeah, but we'll have cost out this year, we'll apply it next year, but we're going to apply that CTEF grant.
For sixty months?
We'll have this, this year.
And if you do, we've worked for a long time, we just can't record that, but...
That depends on how quickly it's get done, and how fast, turn around the dime, just, uh, catch it off. I was planning on my C.T. program starting September one, chip, uh, chip seal, they'll have to...
Oh, the chip seal, you're talking about, no, but it's not...
You're talking about rocking and preparing the roads for, uh, for the chips, uh, which is part of the whole operation.
Tell C, C.T.
How, how will we work that, make that under?
What, what's the word from, bills, right, um, what can you do? What, what can you say about... We can re-advertise, we can extend the deadline, we want to, uh, to receive bills, or we can, uh, re-advertise, or we can, uh, utilize some other means, just to, to, to require, or...
If yours is under fifteen, it's not C.T., so you can just target it.
You have, you have booked somebody, or, or get...
That's a process. Now, in the future, we should think about doing, getting those machines to do our own, and say, the taxpayer a lot of money, help us out. Well, Jack's comment was that the city could use the money, so they may be real quick to, let us pay them, the chip seal machine, at the same price as, to do that, let us do the labor, provide materials, like, buy the machine. If I take three of their people...
To run it.
To run it, I figured twenty dollars an hour, that'd be, you know, take, take you thirty, maybe two, six hundred, twelve hundred bucks, like...
I feel wrong with that?
No, I don't believe that.
Not at all. I'm ten, no bid received, just here, I'm, uh, you know, but, I'm ten, no bid received, just give it, go...
Go on.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. All right, please. Okay, I got nothing, I, uh, just best to, uh, quickly, for, like, placing, I would love all, I believe...
Yeah, everything looks good.
You want to hide a truck, for a second, too?
What now?
One mat truck, for a second, too?
One mat truck, for a second, too? So who, the mat truck?
The mat truck.
The mat truck.
Is this something we're, we're ratifying?
Ratifying, yes. Pumped about it, of course, it might support, you signed it, now send it, and that has his truck. And Rob, they have you.
Can you discuss here?
Hope, um...
Motion to ratify?
Yes, sir.
Good.
I say...
All clear?
Uh-huh.
Can you take a short break, I need to go print something for Travis.
Well, that was the best, we should, Sheriff Department, replacing the C.T. goal, yeah.
Could we take a break from Charlie, the executive? Yep, sure, a second. Back to him in right there?
Sure.
Labor and machine costs, uh, for particular equipment, obviously, they, they... Doesn't mean a stricter truck, we would just get the, oh, yeah. You're gonna have to, yeah, you're gonna have to, so they're, they're, we would just fill their trucks, smooth and roll, and you...
When you, uh, when, we got a new machine, you know, is that green, that you get, I mean, which was the...
Well, it's, I'm fucking him out, yeah, I'm, I'm, we'll put the rest of them, yeah.
Okay. Cool, appreciate it.
It worked out well? It did okay.
All right.
Doing really well.
Where they go? So how does the radio station not benefit from being able to do broadcast football games with that deal on the emergency?
I don't think that'll happen.
I don't, I don't either, but, I don't ever see that happening, but I just found that curious.
I know.
I don't know.
I know. I ain't saying that, I'm saying for the both.
Oh, I know, I know exactly why you did, at least I think I did.
You're probably right.
But, that's, that's the only thing I'm curious about.
I know, I didn't get that either, I really did. He's only gonna be able to do it, Sheriff, let's see.
Yeah, but, like, like you said, I don't ever see that happening, because if there's an emergency that causes that, the football games will stop anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
I just found it, I just found it really specifically brought that up.
That's even a great football game. It's true.
Well, so far, nothing's changing for four, eh, so far.
No, 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 you're right, five A and...
Five and six A.
Yeah, I didn't see, and taps, taps is not...
Taps is...
They're not having a season.
Did, did they change it again? I thought they were just waiting on...
Maybe that was it, I, maybe that was it.
It's, everything's changed so much, it's hard to...
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, we, we got, I mean, there's two taps going around here.
Yeah.
I agree.
We actually have the momma church, saying it's Halloween, and she...
Yeah, please, yeah.
You know, the legacy is never...
What do you think, Mike?
I'm not gonna come on up.
Send him down. Stacey, Stacey, Stacey.
You know, guys, if, if they're paying ten thousand, crack for eight years, we're paying ten thousand, and I'm just paying five, that's twenty-five thousand. And if they're getting anywhere near nineteen or twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars...
Are they getting all that money?
Then, then there's...
They're slacking?
That's not much money, that's, is there, oh...
Not net?
But what I'd like to see you, is why don't the budget work fifty-six thousand to sixty-five thousand? Because there's not that much expense, I would think.
That's a couple of pay raises, that's it. You've got the pay raises, that's it, and it'll be twenty-four hundred dollars.
Who furnishes the, the, uh, computers or monitors? What about the monitor, the computer, right?
We did, we did the work, we're now, helping out for the cops, same, yeah, we're doing that.
Well, he's got the computer set up this morning, he's doing all of the thing, right?
Oh, okay.
And the thing, right, it's also, like, I don't know, this, the, what, like, office, turn this, somebody has furnished those.
I think it depends on the community systems.
But I'm thinking...
Okay, so you know, I told you that one lot, where it was parked, and, and this one, when I got here, I swear it was that one, from that, that was, that city. It was there from right before eight o'clock till early night, we, nine a.m.
Your murders, and child...
You know, that's not much money to consider, I mean, everybody spent a bar.
Those people, you're saying, were suspicious.
They haven't had that meeting yet with the DAs in there, and they'll change.
And, yeah, and, and lived here all my life, I do, you know, it's definitely...
Could make sense of that.
But, I hate to be... We're there, he said, we're there, fine.
Yeah, I would say that, it was like one little kid, so, I think, you're, you're, I, I used my city, it's been a lot, too, but, they, they chip seal.
Yes, yes.
I, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm... So, we want transporters, quit them, out of the year.
You want me to see how many of them, this, this, this...
We got to, we got to do that, but, but, sure, they can, except for their trailer trucks, their dump trucks, get them later.
But, has any of it been on that? Come up, pull that line?
We can, we're able to keep, or, just, they can move it, that's their rocket, or transmission, or... With their dump truck.
Somebody go get that.
It depends on where you stay, you're up, I got a dump truck, you got a dump truck, you got a dump truck. They got to be, they got to have those connections on the back of the dump truck, hook to the lady on the machine, get the bar, and just got hooks to go over it. Right, yeah, hook on to the bar. I'm not sure if the hooks aren't on the truck, and the bar's on the machine, one of the two. I know, when we were doing it, Jim Hely, his only job out there was riding over back in, hook trucks up, once the truck's hooked up, he'd go back there and lift up the next one. You want to, I rode it, I rode the machine a little bit, and it was like sifting flour. If they could save us money, we could throw more rubber to them, because we save money, I sure be happy. We don't use our labor, we still...
I don't want any more chip seal road.
I don't want them, but I have them. I don't want them, but I have them. Well, now, the whole world out there wants chip seal road, and they're a pain. I know they move to the country. Especially when they're war out. It's dusty out here.
Pretty, it's dusty.
It ages, though.
Pretty, it's all free.
Not sure it's...
Yeah. The pretty, they're in, um...
Promise and pay.
The director there, they just bought a new lady out there.
Did they?
And they still got the road.
Worth, Ken? Pretty, two? Three, three? That's my grade, yeah, that's my grade. You recall him?
Yeah.
But, there was something wrong with, I don't know, what did they want to do, you know?
Oh, they got a lot of chip seal, they got a lot of road. You want to get budgeted?
I'll be. I'll just be on bike. Five, five, please.
He got it, like, let... Oh, I can see why, now, I can see, eight, twenty-two, C.T. money.
Oh, yes, no, no, the company, he asked, he, he...
I thought that in there. Yeah, that's Big for Ken, or Andrew's? Howard, Howard, Ken, and nobody in it.
Well, what is it?
Big spring. Yeah, Ray came by seeing me the other day, going by, watching us build that shed, and flipping over the pipe.
It was real, he, he, he was something, he was right on.
Yeah, you know, they'll, hook it out across the, where it ran, then, yeah.
I've got a clear, courts back in session, it is, um, ten fifty-five, late in twenty-seventh day of July, about five, seven, five, here, on item number, failing, County Sheriff, you got to see him, problem.
Yes, sir, uh, sorry to bug y'all today, one of our two thousand, I hope this is one of our two thousand and nine Tahoe, is going to have to, I think, run properly, gonna have either a motor replacement... Or different options, and I have thought up here for y'all today to look at, uh, also, I typed up a...
Not certainly a lot of people.
Yes, sir.
They're looking down the names.
Uh, I typed up a little bit about what this vehicle is used for, um, may have left something out, I hope. Yeah, I probably did, if you got me, I left out the K.
That's the Danish spelling.
Yes, it is.
That's where you get it.
Then I had, I guess I put it there wrong, sorry, just.
Did the strut block?
Uh, apparently, they had to put the long block. They said they had to remove.
What happened was, you know, the connector that holds the, the valve in?
Yeah, valve keeper.
It broke.
It dropped the valve, it hit the piston, yeah.
As long as it was going up and down in the same hole it goes to, at the exact same time, it's all right, but when he, it cocked the side and it bent, it go back up anymore, it wasn't good, that's.
I've got about fifteen or twenty years of service department experience, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, it didn't take long. Use it, tool nine and a half.
Drop.
Dropped it, but swallowed it.
All of it.
Made some noise, I bet. He said he just quit, he locked it up half.
I think for ten percent of the price of the new one.
May we have a better train in when we get ready for that?
That's right.
I had a question, what about light? I mean, does he need a Tahoe to get light, to get that one, like you?
The only problem, and as you know, is all the manuals and computers he has in there, I'm trying, I don't know if we can. You know what I'm saying? Whether we can put all this equipment inside this back pickup, because I don't know what you do, it's still gonna collect dust.
Well, if you repair it, we're going to do all that, we're going to change it out.
Sorry?
If we repair it, it'll, everyone's equipment will just stay like it is.
I lose that, so I leave it, we'll ride. And it's three years more to handle the motor.
What would say in blue, and then the sixty-three thousand dollars?
Four hundred lighter.
That is it, four hundred lighter.
Forty-two hundred and seventy-two dollars for parts, it's a five, it's a seven, it's easy to light.
Can I ask a question to the two thousand and three, the four thousand and five, is this not towed?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, sir. They have worked, it's the way that America, the engine, or replacing. Replacing that, that. It's not really the whole motor, but it's that, the long block of the motor itself, they'll replace all that, yes, sir. It's worth us not spending sixty-three thousand. I'm sorry, if there's any that, the big engine.
Just that part where you, where it went through the piston, where it dropped that valve, and I want to understand all that.
I know whether it's still with piston.
Well, here's, here's the thing, block.
I understand what happened, I don't understand why he replaced the block, but not the head. Is this a long one?
Long block.
The long one puts the heads.
Long block is at the head.
Yeah, short block is without the head.
Short block is without the head.
Okay.
That's, that's the deal, and one reason to doing that is, all the flippers, clips, and they're told to have, all of them done the same one out of mid, so if that was gonna go.
You gotta make a chance. Well, you probably have to redo the crankshaft and the connecting rods.
Yeah.
Well, they suddenly stopped, they have to hit to warm them.
Turn the end, I turned.
Sorry, that's the head.
Does your price, the remade, the price of remade, the factory engine?
What is it?
That's what I said.
What is it?
With the lighter included, yes.
I'm number twelve. Discussing sort of fixed off CTE resolution contract. Thank probably I just got a little bit later on the last meeting. We already had the resolution passed, but again. I'd like to go with resolution two five. Resolution number zero seven seven F five two thousand and twenty. Resolution and order approving county transportation infrastructure grant program agreement. Designating authorized representative in light of specific findings required by Texas Department of Transportation. This was one that we used in the twenty fourteen grant or fifteen grant. That I think was prepared by House. But I just we just took it and put it across the board. Sign here page. And I sent it to Alan Moore, which I followed and he said that's fine. Resolution. But I didn't fully have the contract waking up on text. But the other numbers in the other life legislation, say the contract number district project like that. I heard you at that. They approved the contract. Probably do that all along.
The county of Travis up there, does it need to be Young County or just needs up there? Check down here. Infrastructure fund grant agreement, state county of Travis, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
That stipulates Austin.
Yeah, this is okay.
This one the right circle.
Yeah, I'll find that square.
So you want to approve these as a package? You'll you'll approve these as a?
Yeah, they approved resolution and contract.
I move we approve the CTE resolution contract.
That's it. Have a most important issue assigned. I approve the resolution for CTE. Infrastructure infrastructure program grant and for the contract. They're very precise. On paper. Look at that leave that did come to you. Alan. We've recorded a little bit of, oh, that a hundred forty thousand, five hundred thirty six dollars and five hundred eighty eight dollars. He says you gotta have all of those deep across the nine bodies or then send it back to you. So that hundred forty would be in that.
Twenty. Figure twenty five or which place is number correct? Take another five percent. Like thirty five dollars. Can you order one forty? Alan just put up a margin thirty five.
Said they better be there, said they better be with it.
Not that much. Hundred forty three? Man, maybe a little more than that.
Three thirty five thousand. Well, I haven't had a road, rock the road.
You don't want no papers. I don't want you either, but I'll have it.
I've got some background there.
You want to write your?
In fact, that's one of the deals. Already got a part of it along. That's one of the deals on the CTE that we got that something that I do have. We put rock back in place.
I think you might check it up for that. Zipper, you can charge them for the use of the zipper that you've already owned.
So I'm taking it.
There comes your part.
Yep.
Started into FEMA re-topping project. We did nineteen miles. Just rebased nineteen miles.
Okay, there was a bit procurement policy.
I think he's coming out in the back, please. Let me turn it back to him.
Number eleven. I'll run into this for some FEMA grants where they have procurement policy in place. I guess. Thinking that that's probably going to be required again the last time this was done, twenty thirteen. So I have four colleagues from out here has motion to read off. Procurement policy procedures of Young County, Texas. Left left subdivision of the state.
I move that we approve this procurement policy procedure for Young County, Texas. Second.
Read off. Yeah, I'm gonna get your policy.
All part.
Then I call. We'll have to do here later on possibly. Yeah, hey, what about Martha, Richard, go back here.
We don't get it soon though, but we're still thinking about it. I hope you got it, man. You said that last week.
Yeah.
Did you, so like? Obviously, you're closer to the Lord than I.
Yeah, I did profit.
What about it? That's it, three inches, Mark, your county. My boy Dragon. Did you, didn't you? Did you get any rent?
I didn't either. Sam, break. Yeah, I'll start there right there.
So I blew. Blue, yeah. Right. Yeah. And yeah, now I do it like. He said three and a half inches of his life. Said the property didn't cover two hundred.
Just hit there, dude.
I like that. All right, since you go to direct line with the Lord. Yes, who first you gonna go with it? Yeah, I see. It starts the corona.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna say to best for the rain about the corona. About one fourteen. About fifteen. Do that work shop. And in that time. Budget got Chris Brown, Jamie Lane, Patty Martin, I believe Jamie just back she got tied up. Something that she could.
The boy did came over here. Chris, there he is. Chris isn't it?
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
What's his number, sir?
Four seventy five.
We will allow you to take a mask off until the rest of the someone has one.
Well, I'll make sure I'm back. Check everybody here. I hope you gentlemen are having a good day today. And here, and I'd like you to discuss my closed budget for this coming year. Really, I don't have a whole lot of changes that I'm requesting this matter except for two items. Salaries and then equipment office and furniture and fixtures. I'll tell you specifically why on that at this point. So before I get to that, what I'd like to do is just kind of update commissioners on what you've been able to accomplish so far this year. Of course, it's been a little bit of a pop turn here because of the COVID issue that's been going on since March fifteenth essentially. And we've got great news on that because with the help of the court, with the help of the courts office and my ladies, we have been working diligently on that issue and every year I try to give you all kind of update as to where we're standing on our cases. So starting in March of this year, we had one hundred and fifty four cases, active cases pending. And when we, this month or we're beginning this month, we have one hundred and sixty nine cases pending. So that is an increase. We have an increase every summer because I guess the heat gets people there because they want to commit more crimes. But last year at this point in time, we have one hundred and seventy eight cases. So from last year to this year, we're really only up eighteen cases. On our dock, which I think that is excellent accomplishment considering all the challenges that we've had so far. Once again, I really would like to thank the judge for getting the whole Zoom conference thing down because that's what we've been doing to try and get people blood. Been able to have some motions for revoke carries as well. But eighteen people increased from last year, that's that's almost nothing compared to the number of cases that we've had come in. And for this year, for this month, I haven't, we never get the printout this month. But right now, we're actually standing at a hundred and ninety three cases from a hundred and ninety six, which doesn't sound like a whole lot, except you have to understand that's after taking in all the cases we've taken in this month, we have processed all those cases in for more. So even with COVID, we haven't been able, we have not allowed that to pull us back. I'm doing the business for the county. We've been able to do that because either I or my office staff have been here in this courthouse during the entire pandemic to make sure that these cases get moved in a timely manner because number one, I don't believe they need to be sitting out at the jail costing everybody their money because they can't get postponed. And number two, I do believe in a speed truck getting this stuff taken care of. And once again, I think that we have done that in an exceptional manner during this pandemic.
Chris, do you do you think that this will become a standard method of handling these cases even after the pandemic is society's?
Well, that's completely up to the court. I think that we've got some folks that come from a distance, you know, Weatherford, some of them come from Fort Worth. Maybe we'll be doing it for that, I don't know. The sheriff has very kindly been providing some staff come over to help move people around. Excuse me. I know that we've also had the help of constables, one of the constables helped us out with that. But we're going to add, if that would be a common thing, then we can have some folks up here additional folks to help move people into the jury room.
So is it a net cost savings or a net cost?
That's a great question. The amount of time that it takes to process those cases probably takes a little more time. But where we're at now, it's the best way to move them. Okay, now when we're talking about just folks that are over at the jail, having the jail have to come in and clean them again, but I'll have to drag them all the way over here and take them back. If that's continuing, I do think that would be a net savings because it keeps the jailers from having to come over here, keeps their staff having to come over here and wrangle all those folks from jail. Because then they got them out, they got them back in, plus some security issues, and I do think that would be.
Lucky to be asked what's gonna happen on return to normal, I don't think our normal is gonna be the normal, normal that we have seen before. Right, I, you know, with your input, I'm sure the judge is doing what he's doing with your input and all input of all that other stuff.
So I think that we are going to probably have to end up working under the pandemic until twenty twenty one sometime. Everything that I've been reading from the state Supreme Court office seems they're just gonna continue to extend all the precautions that they're hating from the from that side.
Does that have any effect on your expenses?
No, not on my side. No, not on my side. I do want to say thank you all for providing us some decent obstacle because we have to scan all this stuff in, get it to the other attorneys. They have to scan it, get it back to us. If they're out of the jail, we can mail it out there, they turn it off site and then they scan it back to the judge. Otherwise, we do all that for preparation of our office and they have it right here.
Your internet service, is that?
Most of the times. Sometimes when there's a lot of Zen going on, there's some issues.
That's how they have to bring it.
Well, we've got the judge, you got.
Right, he'll do that. Don't know that we have an actual new normal, but I think that doing here in here state. They're gonna be used by the.
It seems like a safe county, so I remember you got attorney general more worried that way.
Looks like cats, but your safety and terms.
What, I mean, don't we pay their travel?
Nope.
Oh, that's what I was thinking, travel.
It's just flat fee, there is a flat fee.
Okay, I'm interested to see if this costs us money or sales.
Once again, I think that doing it from the jail for the inmates in jail, I think that will be a cost saving for the county. Because of the time it takes and the security get a little here and back. But I think that there's the regular folks are coming in, being arraigned, that are paying the plea or making the announcement. I think it may look quite a wash. So what I would ask the commissioners more for this year is to look at the budget. There's really just three items I want to talk about. And we're gonna start with line item five seventy two, which is hospital fixtures and furniture. I'm going to ask for an increase of that fourteen hundred dollars this year for a couple of reasons. Number one, I personally need a new chair. Mine is, I feel like I'm just sitting on a bunch of bolts setting up for it. It's real painful for long time. I'm gonna ask for that and also my ladies have asked for a standing desk.
Vera desk?
Yeah, like a Vera desk sort of thing. And after having priced all that, getting two of those plus a chair is going to run about fourteen hundred dollars in a couple of years. So I would ask for for that increase. It's six hundred and fifty dollars more, but I do think that's what we are going.
Have you spent your seven hundred and fifty that budgeted this year?
Um, I have not on that because I knew how much I was, I had to research how much was. I probably built it upon a chair.
Could you buy some on this budget here and then some in the next budget?
Where's my player now on that this budget year? Sir, won't you clear it all out during this budget year?
Go ahead, Bob, since you got zero.
You've got some give you there and you've got some money that you law book. And I just make.
Move some of the law book money into that line?
I have to just take that this year's budget.
Wait, get it done by tomorrow?
Yeah.
Get it that way.
Well, and if you'll look, if you'll take one moment to look at the law books, it's two hundred and sixty one so far this year, but if you look at last year, it was a thousand seventy seven dollars and forty nine cents. Those books will be published starting in September. And so they'll all be ordered and then that will eat up my entire line item, so I'm gonna have to get money there.
You're right. So you'll pay for them in September, right? In the land book.
Yeah, they'll all come to you there on on that order.
All the laws, all the laws need to pay in September.
Can you do anything with that box ticked up?
Well, I I can't personally benefit from it, so I can't buy my type of chair out of that.
It's a county chair, by the way.
Well, but I, the rules are very strict on that. If I'm gonna benefit personally from it, I can't.
But your girls.
Well, I can certainly look at that for those ladies.
I don't think there, I don't have much of it in there, but I don't think there's money in there.
There's nothing for you now, thirty thousand dollars left in there now. I'm using nine hundred and eighty dollars out of that deal.
Well, let me take a look at that. I know that last year we, for various and sundry, it was twenty four hundred is what we spent out of that. So I know that it's budgeted at three thousand, but I don't think that's actually in there at this point.
Over budgeted.
Yeah, so once again, I don't think that that three thousand dollars is an actual representation of what is in there, that's just what was budgeted.
Yeah, but wonder, are you looking, no, because it's.
Yeah, it's like nine hundred and something dollars at this point.
There's not much there.
How much is your chair?
Uh, well, what I was looking at is gonna be up six of the lines. Yeah, that that chair that I'm replacing was there for Dane and for Boyd. So it's, we definitely got our amortization out of that chair.
There's so many comments. Only alone.
Okay, so then line item four two seven, education, I've got eighty five hundred dollars in there. Now, it shows we actually spent four thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars. That's because I was going to be scheduled to go to two other conferences this year so far that were canceled because of COVID. And so that would have eaten up the additional funds on that. So I'm going to ask you to please leave that alone. I know that it doesn't look like the numbers use in total, but it needs to please stay that.
Like everybody's.
So and then the last thing I'm going to ask for is for one oh one, one oh four and one oh five, salaries to that. I am going to ask for a little bit more than what y'all normal would put in for those, for my ladies, I'm requesting you to go from thirty four five to thirty eight even. And for mine from forty four to forty eight even as well. Once again, I know that's a little bit more, but you know, I say this every year, I believe that we have really worked hard for the county. I know everybody said, well, we all work hard, I know that. But once again, we really have put everything we've got into this to try and keep the normalcy, the normalness and to keep work process coming through the county even during this pandemic. And I would like to reward my secretaries in my office for that. I understand the budget is gonna be tight this next year, I understand that as well. But my golly, I just got my tax bill for the for my house and my properties.
Yeah, you only have that on my.
No, no, I don't.
Tire, stop it, man. On your part time group.
Yes, sir.
As I found out.
Okay, so that's a great question I'd like you to ask about that part time. Jean is retiring in September. So I am going to be taking that position from a two day to a three day a week position, so it should eat up all the.
We're gonna push some education money to buy that furniture. You mean you're gonna use it for the years out, you say?
Oh, that's a good idea.
I mean, you're not gonna be able to use it. Some document. If you're not gonna use that money.
I mean, you're not.
I heard what you said about keeping it there.
Right.
But we got it there now. No, because you're an education.
You know, everyone's education is gonna be just like that because so many things.
Can we move the things that are over budgeted? I mean, that we overspend?
Salaries, you know, I just have.
You said we, I asked that question last minute, we can't move salaries. But we can move line items that are not salaries specifically. So we can buy furniture through the education money.
We don't see any classes before October.
Yeah, I don't need any classes, but there's possibly one in November and one in.
Next budget year.
But yeah, but I've got, I have to, I have to pay for it this year. Now, but they have it somewhere or not, they're still considering whether they want to be in or not. I don't want to have to get canceled.
So if we moved a thousand dollars to that education budget.
If you move two thousand, that would be good, just make sure we got money over there, I would appreciate that.
So they give you.
Go ahead and purchase one of these.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're gonna be getting rid of that?
No, he's actually.
Set on this.
They raise up.
Send that work. I've got that. What I say is, what's wrong with my nuts?
They help your back.
I get a lot displays.
Are you sure enough that it's been done all night? Because Mike, I need a new phone book. Chair.
Stop, I can stand where you stand from. One, you have to sit your chair under the two pretty ones there.
But anyway, that's what I would, what I would bring forward to the to the commissioners this time and the court. And if y'all have any questions for me as to anything I've I've said. Just Roger, you've been very silent, sir. Yes, sir. She's been retired. And Jean, the young lady that sits on the front. I have interviewed one, I've got two more interviews coming up.
And Jean, you've been working for a normal time this year?
No, she is not.
But COVID, she was at that time that part time doesn't work, they don't. She work.
Two. I'm gonna be making that three day position. I'll try.
Do you expect that context availability is expected to continue to decrease?
I I do, actually. It has decreased every year that I've been in office because less people are using checks, more people are using debit credit cards. And because of that, before I took office, actually, I had sat and talked with Dane. And he said when he first started office, sometimes there would be up to eight, ten thousand dollars in that account. And I think the most that I've ever had in that account has been about twenty six hundred dollars. And I don't know that we're gonna break a thousand dollars this year.
It's like we broke your up there.
Yes, because it's not a real line item anyways, just whatever is in there. I would say probably a thousand dollars is probably realistic for me on that.
This is the one you supplement?
Yes, ma'am.
So what we do is we have a revenue, sign the back and.
I remember back in the day, I used to pay, I lose twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars on there because the county attorneys just buy cameras and stuff. because the county attorneys just buy cameras and stuff like that.
When Boyd was in office, he was supporting a position with that line item, and there's no more.
There's money not included.
And not only that, but it used to be that we would have authority over checks, twenty dollars to two thousand. And now they have taken that, uh, the legislation has changed, we're aiming a hundred dollars more. Goes down to J Q three. Well, the vast majority of checks are under a hundred dollars. And so, that took, you know, most of those checks away from us. Plus, people are using less checks anyway, so the revenue on that's just not there.
Money and checks, it's all the big plastic.
So, well, on that education, do you need the information that they're looking at? Their, their files, the list of, the, the.
They're, my understanding is they're still going to be requiring all hours, so I have to.
You know, that, when since that canceled theirs, we still register that hundred dollars, and they actually, no, that registration can't be requested back, but Marsh and I are still going to, and still get the hours.
They did, they did get a, consider we are, our, we used to be present.
I'm sorry, I'm kidding.
We used to be present to get our hours, we gave it back, but they did get a little creative this year.
Well, they do have online webinars and things that, that I can attend, but the one that I'm looking forward to is going to be in the film room. Which is next year. Plus, I can register for it now. But once again, that's what I was saying, is they're, they keep saying on the website, you know, we'll reopen, we'll open registration when we know. That could be tomorrow, that could be, you know, for sure.
Never.
They have to cancel the, uh, the, uh, that.
Nobody has.
And they have to cancel my fall conference in October, middle of October. I've already registered.
Commissioners, does anyone else have any questions for myself?
Your honor, please.
Alright, I appreciate it, and I appreciate, I know that I'm, I'm not running best election this time around, I look forward to continuing, sir, over the county. Please relax for you. Thank you very much.
Can you read your current status, please?
You know, all those things like that, it's all here today.
No, you're not going to be spending anything.
What's your number?
Snager answer, so I got the.
It looks bad, I'm sorry, but I've got some things I want to do.
You have the money for the bill, miss?
Uh-huh.
What's your, what's your number?
Say no problem.
Four oh three.
No, give me any waiting desk.
Not going to do waiting desk, I need a desk.
You said that, but so far, nobody has. Okay, the first page is mainly just stats that I've got of what we've scanned in, in the office, and where we're at. And the brands could be changing for y'all that are town people. Well, they're, they're talking about now, since the COVID-nineteen came through, they're not talking about it as much, but in September, the brands are up for renewal.
Yes.
Okay, so there is a program out there that one of the county clerks and her IT person created, and they were supposed to be getting it out there to everybody. And so, you can go home and sit there and fill out your application online, and you come up to the county clerk's office, draw your brand, and pay us, and as soon as we accept the payment, it goes down to the cattle association, and it's in our computer, and you're correct. But we haven't heard anything else on the program. I've been trying to call, haven't heard anything.
So, if we want to do it early?
If you do it early, you're still going to pay this time, and then you're going to pay it in September. Okay, so, we've been trying to let everybody know that, but if you do it now, you're going to have to do it in September. Okay? So, it's twenty-six for each place of the brand. So, if you put it on the left ear, it's twenty-six. If you put it on the right ear, it's twenty-six. If you put it on the left ear or the right ear, it's twenty-six for each ear. Okay?
You did all that brand?
Brands, it's all kind of.
Tattooed.
Huh?
I'm not about that.
Okay.
A tattoo.
Tattooed. Okay. Okay, so that's all the marines. The rest of it is pretty explanatory. We're still, and I'm going to say one thing, that this floor, the second floor or the first floor, has got a good working relationship here. County attorney, county clerk, and the county judge's office, because we can sit down and talk about things and get things done. And our cases are doing really well. Uh, obviously, I am doing recordings for the criminal side, and it is put into the file just to help the county and protect the county, protect the judge. We are also doing that on the probate, requesting the judge on the earnings. So, that is one thing, but we do have a good working relationship, you know, getting things moved in here on criminal, juvenile, and everything. One thing, last year when I came in here, I asked for a scanner and a spotter for the office. We've got the metal cabinet, uh, cabinet scanned in on the plates. And we have emailed approximately ten of them that have gone, and we've gotten money on it. And we have helped the historical commission on getting stuff for the, when they were working on this building up here, the old process center, uh, scanning it, so that they can email for the brand. We got that sent in, we use that machine. But we're also making copies for people and printing off for people. And so, it's starting to come in use. So, the scanner, we are going to try to use something this next year. The big thing that I have on the back for COFAL is we have some old commissioner coordinates downstairs that are in real bad condition. And I think there's eleven books, maybe fourteen of them. And I'm going to try to use that archive money on getting those redone because of the history of the county that are in those books. So that when people come, they don't fall apart because it's only one that we have. And so, COFAL cabinet pick up the books, take them back, and then redo them so that the history is still there. And so, it is thirty thousand four hundred and forty dollars, and so we have that money involved. God, he is not out yet.
I hope the document turns this can of books.
These are going to be put into a plastic.
So, it will be the original document?
Yeah, it will be the original, but they clean them up, get fingerprints off, and put them into the cabinet, and then read them. Okay, so that's the way it is. Now, some books that I do have downstairs on the deeds, the original deeds are still downstairs in a different book, but the ones I have upstairs are the ones that.
Do you have two copies of those? Although, although filmed with the trans craft, have written probably something like that.
No.
So, can you recurse it right in your file?
I have not got those down because you do not find people that want to send out and read those. So, but front books sixty-five to present are in the computer. Okay? But the ones from one to sixty-five are not in there because of the. Okay, then when I find somebody that wants to be out, it'd be liable of reading that and putting it in the computer and wanting to.
What's going to happen to those historical documents that people can't read?
They're still there, the copies are there, and people do come in and look at them and try to translate them out, and that's their, that's their will, try, because I want things that they can read.
But right now, you're not held responsible for making them read a little part of them.
Uh, they're there. And they can come out.
You're not responsible for making.
As far as putting a grantor or a grantee in that computer stating that this is what I believe, no. Now, they are scanned into the computer. It's, it's.
In the original form?
But they don't have a grantee grant torture, because somebody wants to go out there and say, this is what I believe because of the handle. So, anyway. So, that's the one project I want to take out of archive, is the thirty thousand to redo those for this. That we kind of get into every so often, but not too much, but they're there. And the other project I'm going to do is not going to cost anybody except time for my girls and time for me, are the military discharge books. From present till nineteen something, we have got the discharge. Now, I do have a bidet, but military discharge are such a big piece of paper that we've never had a scanner until just recently to be able to scan through them. So, before Hayden left to go to school, I sit down and quiz his little mind, and he agrees with me that I can scan them in and put them into a PDF, put it onto an external hard drive, and be able to connect it to my computer in the front and be able to print them, which we've never been able to do. We've always had to reduce them down and sit there, play with them. This I should be able to have to do, I should be able.
It's a big sheet.
Uh, no, it's a, the big sheet, the fourteen by seventeen. Yeah, it's a big sheet, and I have one coffer that does that. And all we have to do is get them to be able to do that. So, it's just going to take time.
From that part, you have to do that for Jean. Would you save time anyway?
So, that's one of the projects that we're looking at, plus we are still scanning criminal, we're still scanning probate, and we're still trying to get some of the civil cases scanned in. But like, as you can see, we're getting there, it's just taking time. Okay? So, in my budget, the only thing I've asked for is a raise. This floor, through this whole epidemic, has been one of the floors that has stayed open through everything. Whenever other people went home, or they can be behind locked doors, this, these offices here stay. Now, some went home, yes, but most of them, because we're public offices, stay. I either let my girls go home to run as a stagger to make sure that we at least had somebody in that office to keep it open or making sure something was there to answer. Now, I will say, my office runs from eight to four, we close our door at four, but we wipe down everything in the office from four to four. That whole cabin in the front is pushed down, the windows are, and the plastic barriers that jump it up for me have been the best thing we've had. We wipe them down every day, we wipe our computers down every day, we wipe down all of the computers, and if anybody comes in and anybody sits at a desk, they're wiped. Everything is wiped out in my office before we ever. Just to try to keep it clean and to keep people from.
Can you send your group out the lines?
Well, we've done it down now, different ones now for different areas to go, so we can get it done. But, anyway, that's the only thing I'm asking for, is that y'all consider the ones that actually stayed up here and worked during this virus and need to go home. Anyway, that's all I have.
Good, thank you, Kate.
So, you're not spending any else, except for a raise.
So, what do you need on that? The way to stay and put it on each other.
For the archive, it needs to, y'all need to make a motion to approve the thirty thousand, whatever, and then I'll get the guy sort of.
What do you do that as a?
Go through the vouchers. Huh? You'll go through the vouchers, they'll go through the vouchers.
Do they approve those, they want to put their motion, but I don't want them to go there.
I want a special fund.
Yes, it's moved into the treasures again.
Taxary.
Y'all can sign off on radio.
Y'all sign off through vouchers.
Get it done.
Get it done.
So, that's all I have in the general.
It is, and I haven't moved, removing the money out of.
Oh, no, all my education, y'all were talking about.
Just move it from there. The, I think it's about the voucher.
Oh, my.
Yeah, but y'all approved to move it out of contingency.
Okay, contingency, okay. That's why this was planned.
Yeah, and also my education, they're doing the same thing as what Chris is doing, except one of the classes that I registered for was a probate class in Lubbock. They sent most of the money back, except kept a hundred dollars, and I'm taking webinars. And now they're not waiting our, our, uh, our hours, we have to make sure to get our hours. So, they're trying to put different webinars on at different times, uh, making sure that we can get our hours. So, I've got one that's on. So. Uh, no, this one was pretty good. This one was on a mix, it's on a, for registration of guardian chips to make sure that if they're not mentally competent, uh, make sure that we put them in the computer so that they can own hidden guns or whatever. And so, so, and they just explained one of that to us.
Your ID is. What's your computer?
It depends on what the topics are, but.
I need to pay attention to somebody. I'm in a room.
Anything else?
Do I have the right number of information?
I didn't really look at yours, uh, mine, I just put it there. Yeah, the office supplies will be about the same. In many ways, this stays on different occasion here, the.
I did change your computer links, because that filled in, it was twenty-nine thousand a week.
Oh, and that is another thing that we, I've been talking to Netnet about, is there's a thing out here called e-recording, which is on deeds.
Sir.
And, uh, they are not. They didn't mention anything with what I've already got, so I've got one baby, so I'm trying to work that down on that. That's it.
It goes up some every year.
But you have to probably make sure you call everything, I mean, not hard. So, I can fix it, and then turn home, so I can fix it. That's all I have.
Alright.
We possess one party.
One party.
Okay.
Judge, do you have that sun letter from Pedge and that?
Yes, ma'am. I don't think it was the sun. Okay, I'll just get it some later, too. Okay. I'm going to take this and. Uh, do you want to add or sign those down?
Michael, thank you. There's a little drill, dude, connect that up.
Here's one of the resolutions for this, uh, April fracture, for the guy.